If you could take a moment and silence your cell phones. And then please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do not have any proclamations this evening. So the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I do need to add a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with USTA. This is associated with item H on your agenda. Councilmember Julie Mayfield has a conflict that you might want to explain very quickly under item F.
Sure, yeah, and I'll ask if that gets pulled off and that we vote on it separately. So this is a, an agreement between the city and the organization I work for, Mountain True, to build and maintain some trails in the Falconhurst Nature Preserve in West Asheville. There's no money exchanging hands, but it is with my organization, so I will not be voting on that one.
So can we have a motion to recuse Julie from that item?
So moved.
Second.
You can vote on the consent agenda first.
Do you, you don't want us to do it? Okay, we'll do, let's do a motion to adopt the consent agenda without item F first?
May I make a comment first?
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to celebrate a couple, well, lots of things in this consent agenda. Our community being incredibly generous and involved, the Preservation Society contributing $7,500 to the Thomas Wolfe Cabin Master Planning Project, the fact that Mountain True is going to work with the city to construct and maintain the Falconhurst Nature Preserve trails, and the fact that the USTA is granting $35,000 to the city for some Aston Park improvements. Those are, I mean, I think a real testament to our community being very generous and the fact that the city does a good job partnering with these various organizations. So I am happy, but I just wanted to kind of pull them out and celebrate them a little bit.
Okay, and then is that your-
And then I would make a motion to adopt the consent agenda except for item F.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone else on council that wanted to comment on these or have a question about these before I ask for any public comment? Okay, is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda without item F? No? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now I need a motion to recuse Julie Mayfield from item F.
Make a motion to recuse Councilwoman Mayfield from item F.
Second.
Do I vote on this motion? Or do I not vote on this motion? I do not vote on this motion, okay? I'm not voting on this motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now do I have a motion to adopt or to approve item F?
Make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Mountain True to construct and maintain natural surface trails within the Falconhurst Nature Preserve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second, anyone wishing to comment on the motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I feel a little rusty after winter holiday break here. Okay, we don't have any presentations and reports, which is crazy insane since I think we did an hour of them last time. We do have a few public hearings. The first is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the 2018-19 Annual Action Plan for the reallocation of an estimated $1,396,100 in federal home investment partnership program funds, and Michael Blair is here to talk to us about this item.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am Michael Blair with Community and Economic Development. This is my first time in front of you with an item, so what I'm here about is the public hearing, and you have in your materials actually a summary of the funds that were actually reallocated, and I'd like to project that, if possible. Can you, is that readable? Okay. Basically, this item comes to you from the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium. It's a home program consortium that consists of Madison, Buncombe, Transylvania, and Henderson Counties, and actually, we are the lead entity, the city of Asheville, and the lead entity basically does all of the administrative tasks, the management, the planning, program management, and compliance for this program. And the chair of that committee is also Councilmember Mayfield, who is the chair of the HCD as always, the chair of the regional consortium board. They approved this reallocation plan on November 1st, and basically, the reason we had the reallocation in the first place was because two projects that were awarded back in July did not get their tax credits. When affordable housing developers go out for tax credits, they apply to the state. When the state basically funds one out of every four applications, because it's a very competitive process, doesn't mean they were bad applications, just means they didn't get funded in this round. So about $1.4 million was then made available from a contingency amount, which is just some home funds that were not allocated prior to that, along with program income, which is just loan repayments that come back to the program from either rental properties or older projects. The projects themselves, you've got East Haven Apartments, which is in Suwananoa, you have Amaranth, Workforce Amaranth, 70 years, just north of Inca Village, and then Dodd Meadows, which is in Henderson County. Basically, so you have a pretty good mix, and I've looked back on the history of this going between the four counties, so I think that it was a good decision made by the regional consortium board. Basically, we got, I believe, two point, about $2 million in requests, and these were for projects that we knew, that the board knew could go forward, and they ended up choosing these three projects. So unless, is there any questions? Are you happy to answer them?
Anybody on HCD? Okay, thank you. All right, I will open the public hearing unless anyone has any questions before I do that.
Thank you.
All right, I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to comment on this item, you can do that, just state your name, and you would have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Asheville City Council approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an amendment to the 2018-2019 Consolidated Action Plan for the Home Investment Partnership Program.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Our second item on the public hearings agenda is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the conditional zoning of property located at 275 and 281 Hazel Mill Road for changes to a residential development zoned RM16 residential multifamily high-density district conditional zone. Jessica Bernstein is here to talk to us about this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the public, members of the council. As was stated, this is a request to review a modification to a previously approved conditional zoning, and the site was, or the project was last approved by council in 2015. It's on Hazel Mill Road at the corner with Clayton. As you can see on the exhibit map, the project site is identified there. So it's currently zoned RM16 CZ, and the proposal would remain RM16 CZ. There's just a few elements of the site plan and the project that the applicant wanted to amend, and that required coming back, as you know, the conditions in a conditional zoning are quite specific. So there's just a few of those items that they wanted to change. This is the site plan, it's largely the same, probably one of the biggest changes, actually I can show you the 2015 first, this was 2015. The number of units remains the same, it's 113 residential units, a mix of one and two bedrooms. The number of buildings remains the same. They have, the previous approval had on-street parking along Clayton, and they've eliminated that and brought in a new surface parking area, so that results in a third curb cut along Clayton. They have no curb cuts along Hazel Mill Road. Another change, besides the new entrance, the removal of the on-street parking, the previous approval had plans to have pervious pavers throughout all of the parking areas and through the cost analysis. They realized that's something that they weren't able to do if they wanted to have the units available at the low, lower price points that they're trying to have. It does include affordable housing, that hasn't changed. So they've eliminated the pavers from the parking area and requested a little flexibility from the previous approval on some of the exterior building materials. There was also a condition in the, in the last approval that said bus passes would be offered to, or made available for all residents in perpetuity, and there's not a bus line that runs along Hazel Mill, so he's asked to amend that so that bus passes could be offered for two years in the event that a transit line comes on Hazel Mill. All of these seem to make a lot of sense to staff there, all right. They've been reviewed by the TRC and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those other sticking point had to do with sidewalks. So that first approval, or the 2015 approval, had that on-street parking I mentioned on Clayton, and in that, there was going to be a six-foot back-of-curb sidewalk. Since they've taken that parking off, they've asked to do a five-and-five, which is the city's standard, and so the transportation department and planning staff were on board with that. The change that they're proposing to the Hazel Mill sidewalk is really the only sticking point that staff has with this proposed amendment. The 2015 approval was a six-foot back-of-curb sidewalk, and they've proposed to move the sidewalk into the site up to about 30 feet from the street, and this, their proposals or their reasoning behind that is to preserve a line of white oak trees that are along the stretch of the frontage. The staff was not supportive of that change. We want that sidewalk to be six-foot back-of-curb as it was in that past approval. There's plans to continue the sidewalk all the way to Louisiana, that's going to be a six-foot back-of-curb sidewalk. So the staff from planning and transportation both agree that that's really what should be in place along this, this frontage as well. Aside from that, those were really the changes to the previous approval, is in line with the city's goals and objectives with the new living Asheville plan. It's still in an area that's appropriate for this type of use and density, so everything is, is in place with that. And that concludes my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Also, I know Andrew Seabor, the city's traffic engineer, is here as well.
So I have a question. You poor thing, you sound very sick.
Yes, stay with us.
Supposed to be feeling better. You're supposed to be feeling better. Yeah, well, you do that.
Thank you.
So I actually don't have a problem with the sidewalk curving in, that, that doesn't bother me at all, and especially if it's to save trees, and I don't know if everybody had a chance to see this, but Steve Hendricks, the chair of our tree, the city's tree commission, sent us an email. He's been out to the site, and he recommends curving the sidewalk in in the way that, that is, that the applicant has proposed. So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support that particular aspect of it, but to your point about the, the staff recommendation, when the sidewalk comes back in at either end, is it, is, does it come back in in a, in a way that can be tied into-
It does.
-back-of-curb extensions on either side?
Yes.
So it's just that one stretch that, that they're looking, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then my other question was about the bus pass, this may actually be for the applicant. I, I totally understand maybe not wanting to be on the hook for, free bus passes for everybody in the, in the development in perpetuity. What I would ask is whether they would be willing to be, to keep that commitment for the renters of the affordable units. So that's, what, 20% of the units?
10%.
10%? Yeah. So whether, whether that would be willing, because when we, when we do extend that sidewalk, then it'll be a very short walk down to Patton where there is excellent transit. I don't know that there's any plans for transit to be, to ever be on Hazel Mill, but it's a, it's a short walk to Patton, so I, I don't, again, I don't know who's here.
So we, so I'm sure we have a representative from the developer, we can, we can note that question?
Okay.
Well, would Councilwoman Mayfield consider changing the request to not two years for everybody, just in perpetuity for all the, for the affordable housing units?
That's my suggestion, sorry. If that wasn't clear. In perpetuity for the, for the residents of the, for the resident, the renters of the affordable units.
And for, and to eliminate the need for-
For all.
-the rest.
Yes.
Even for the two years.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Yeah.
I mean, that might be a little bit easier for-
Sure.
Are there any other questions of staff before we hear from a developer representative? Anybody else have any questions about this? Okay, do we have a representative?
Oh my gosh.
I'm so confused.
Haven't seen, yeah, I am too.
Last one passed. Everybody, the low-income housing units, 10%, I believe that commitment's for a decade, the rent restriction, I don't mind tying the bus passes to that.
That's fine, for that period of time, yeah.
The ownership entity that we've set up for this will own the property for 10 years. I mean, it's a, we have to. But when we go to sell it, we'd like for, you know, a decade, 12 years, 15 years, and not to have additional restrictions. I've got no problems there. On the tree thing, guys, it just, I'm a developer for the city council trying to save trees, but-
Thank you.
Well, this is the solution we came up with. On the sidewalk, sidewalk's a little more complicated than I would like, but it does meet ADA standards, okay? Whereas if we were to put it behind the curb and send it straight up, if you're familiar with the road, the topo is all on our property, so it's a hill, and then it kind of flattens out. So we have to deal with ADA issues with it being on private property, which we have done, but if we conform to what city staff is saying, keep it back-of-curb, it's not ADA accessible. Plus, they're, they're really nice trees. I'd like to keep them, they don't just affect us, they actually affect the whole neighborhood, and everybody drives up and down that street, it's practically a canopy. So it's actually going to cost us more, and certainly costs us some delays to get the approvals, but, you know, what the hell, we've tried. Anything else? Oh, I'm Harry Pilows, so I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions from council or any other parts of the development team, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Again, you have, state your name, and y'all have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Sarah Skinner, I'm from Asheville, West Asheville, and I want to say congratulations to the city on your support of increased options for affordable housing. This is in response to a need, and we need to thank you for recognizing this important need and, and the way you're asking developers to revise plans, looking at potential land sites and monies for the city, making monies available in different arenas. It's very exciting to see the 10% ADAMI included in this project, and I noticed when reading it that also, for me, it's very positive that affordable housing is a feature and listed as a plus on these reports. I wanted to mention, however, that looking at HUD's figures, ADAMI, well, let me start first and say that the average median family income is $61,300 a year. That means for the ADAMI group, that a one-family, a one-person family would be making $34,350, a two-person family $39,250, three, $44,000, $150,000, and so forth. You can look it up, I'm sure you all already know this. But it breaks down to meaning that a one-person household would need to be making $1,651 an hour, and a two-person family $1,887 an hour. These people do need affordable housing. There are other people also who work hard in Asheville but have lower-paid jobs, and they're often the backbone of the city and our tourist industry, who also need affordable housing. So I'm here today, and I'm guessing these people don't make $16 and $18 an hour. I'm wondering if in the future we can, and maybe even in this project, but it's probably too late for this project, consider 60, 50, and 30 AMI levels. The city is doing such exciting things, and I'm looking forward to watching Asheville develop more and more affordable housing. I hope we can figure out how to make including housing that is affordable for folks in lower AMI levels feasible and possible, because I know it's very challenging financially. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
It's one of my eyes here, but I keep hearing this affordable housing, and I assume that part of the reason for this is hopefully to help take away from, you know, all they're dealing with at the vets' quarters and all the homeless issues, stuff to try to help people get up on their feet and get affordable housing. At least that's what it sounds like, you know? If you ever pay attention to how Habitat for Humanity or how we do things like Hearts with Hands, is you can move mountains with an army. That's what, when the hurricanes hit, we turned around and we had schools come in, the YMCA, you know, they had volunteers come in just on mass efforts, and that's how we got the food down there, there's 5,000 kids, before the holidays let out. My suggestion on it is if y'all are doing this, and you've got somebody from the vets' quarters or somebody y'all are actually helping move out or help find housing, or somebody with the homeless community and stuff like that, have a representative, somebody actually get up there with the VAQ and stuff, or somebody out there with Haywood Street, and I bet you can get an army to actually go down and help dress your properties, get pavers moved, or whatever y'all are doing, and those efforts in one day, what it should actually help save on the cost, it actually helps y'all in the bigger picture.
Tracey DeRoux.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I have any questions, comments, or a motion? I think we heard the applicant say they would agree to a 10-year time period or tie the bus passes to whatever time period the affordable housing period runs.
For those affordable units.
For the affordable housing units.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to, with that change in the conditions, I am happy to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the conditional zoning amendment for White Oak Grove Apartments at 275 and 281 Hazel Mill Road from residential multifamily high-density district conditional zone to residential multifamily high-density conditional zone. Okay, and find that their request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in that the amendment does not substantially deviate from the project details previously approved, other than the changes to the site plan. The development is located with close access to commercial uses, transit, and employment opportunities. The project includes dedicated affordable residential units, and the project, the proposal is aligned with the future land use map in the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments from council?
Just to make sure that, that condition with the 10 years is included.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. The next item on the public hearings agenda is item C, a public hearing to consider conditional zoning of property located at 99999 Ferry Road from RM16 residential multifamily high-density district to commercial expansion district conditional zone for up to 15,000 square feet of commercial uses, and a residential expansion district conditional zone for a mix of housing types totaling 418 units, resulting in a split zoned parcel and amendment to the future land use map to change from traditional neighborhood to residential neighborhood. Vidila Sathika is here to talk to us.
Good afternoon, Vidila Sathika with Planning and Urban Design. This is a request to review a conditional zoning of 137 acres in South Asheville. To begin, I wanted to give you a view from a map, just to give you some context, because this is a big site, and this image here shows Asheville, actually, let me turn on the city boundary. And the site that we're talking about is down here, it's a, it's a satellite.
So it's not connected?
It's not connected, but it's part of the city, and it's, it's a big site, it's, it's about half the size of the central business district. So to get down there, it's, it's basically on the west side between the Asheville outlets and the arboretum, right in between there. And so this is the layout that the developer's proposed. It would provide 416 new, new units. There was a, an error, what you saw was 418 units, but we had some adjustments that were made, so it's 416 units. This, I'll, I'll get to the site plan, but this just shows that there are two access points off of Ferry Road, so there's two different ways to get in and out, and then all traffic would get to Brevard Road, and our traffic engineers are here to talk about any considerations relating to traffic. If I can get overhead, please.
The Biltmore Estate is on the way.
The Biltmore Estate?
The Woodland side.
Yeah, that's right. This is the Biltmore right here, and this is Biltmore property, and all of this is Biltmore.
Sorry, we're-
It's not showing us your map anymore.
Wait, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we, sorry, we went to the other one, we're switching around too fast.
Nope.
Should we do this one first, and then we'll go back to the map?
Yeah. Whoa. There you go. You got it, Vidila, go.
Okay.
Every time you touch a Vidila, it goes away.
Wherever we, wherever we land, we'll go with it. Okay, so this, this is a breakdown of the housing types. So one of the pros that we see with this project is that there are various types of housing units being provided. So you can see the yellows highlighting the duplexes, 188 of those units. There are three buildings that will provide 36 condos. The red in the top, it's hard to see there, is for live-work units, and then all the white lots are single-family. So when we look at the colored plan, you can see there, there are a lot of trees, I think it's 820 trees that are being added. Some of the things I'll call out here, these blue little ponds, our stormwater capture ponds, they are providing a dog park down here at the bottom. There will be a greenway easement along the entire perimeter that was required, actually, as part of the transfer of the property from the city of Asheville to Buncombe County. Some of the roads show different colors, and that's just to highlight that the yellow roads are one-way roads, and they're more narrow, and so the development was trying to minimize the impact, and so wherever it was possible, they added either one-way roads, or in some of these cases where there's a green line here, those are alleys, so vehicles can access from the back and hide the cars and make more of a new urbanist front that doesn't prioritize automobiles and makes it look a little bit more pedestrian-oriented. That's, that's, in a nutshell, there will be 105 parking spaces distributed throughout the site. We do have a B1 conditions list that you received, and this afternoon, there was an update from the developer with a commitment to provide at least 5% of the units to be affordable at 100% area median income. The other, one change that, that was made was that the total number of units will not exceed 416, but may be reduced depending on market conditions, they may have to bring that number down, so we're adding that here so that there's some flexibility that makes it, so they don't have to come back to city council if they have to do that. And-
Vidila, can you talk about the parking again? So there's, how many units and how many parking spaces?
There, there are, the parking is distributed throughout the subdivision, so primarily, it's parking provided with each housing unit, so like you do in any, well, let me show you these, the, some of these details sheets. This is a detail of the top-left quadrant, so you can see, right, these duplexes have parking provided in the front. Some of the, some of the units, like these duplexes here, have an alleyway- Some of the units, like these duplexes here, have an alleyway and parking in the back. The condos have on-street parking around the buildings. So for the most part, the parking is at the lot.
But, so the number of parking units is how many? I mean, is there one parking at least?
There is at least one parking space per unit. Did I say something that sounded different than that?
I thought I heard something, parking unit starting with one, and I thought the unit started with a two.
I did say something like that. I'll let the developer clarify that error, if that's okay.
Okay. I have a question. So tell us why we need to do this rezoning. What is the difference between these two zoning categories? What does this one get us that the other one doesn't? Or what are we losing in this one that we would get in the other one? That wasn't clear to me.
Well, they are wanting to include commercial activity.
Here?
Right. So if I didn't specify that, there is a small node here of commercial, 8,000 to 15,000 square feet, that they're thinking is some sort of a neighborhood coffee shop or, you know, local gooder service. And that is not allowed in residential expansion. So we had to split zone. Basically, we don't have a zoning district that allows for everything that we want to do here, so we had to break it up.
Great, thank you.
Can you talk about the B1 conditions, number nine? As far as, in layman's terms, for folks who aren't familiar what area median income is, and 100% of area median income, so on and so forth, what that means to folks? 5% affordable units?
I am not the best to speak on, are you, you're asking about the cost of the units?
I believe you see that on the conditions.
I wouldn't have a number for that. I'm not sure if there's somebody here. I'll just put it out there.
Brian or Michael are still around, they'll know.
Is Michael here?
List of the conditions?
Yes, it came into them.
Oh, it's on the email. That's right, sorry.
It's workforce level, but I don't, I haven't seen those numbers recently, and...
I know it was added, just recently added, so that's why I was asking the question.
I was thinking maybe the developer can respond in a minute.
Can anyone else have any other questions before we hear from the developer? Is there a developer representative who's...
Good morning, or good afternoon, I should say. I just wanted to address that last question, because it's fresh on my mind. I've been working with Paul D'Angelo of the city, going through all of the different systems that are available. And it's geared towards workforce housing, which is about, we've come up to about $200,000 level for a home. And it's not, you know, that's approximately where we're at right now on some of the condominiums, for example, we'll just use that as an example, so that it can be fit in. He told me that the city was actually changing a lot of the systems just after the first of the year, so that's why we've kind of, you know, we're still working, it's still a work in progress. When we looked at this piece of property, originally it was industrial, and then when it changed over to residential, it really seemed like the perfect place to do the type of development that we wanted to do, which is a multi-economic development. So it really lends itself very nicely for single-family homes. There are, say, up to about 4, 450, 450,000, somewhere thereabouts, all the way down to the $200,000 level. And the reason for that is because we have a real housing crisis, as you know, here in Asheville. And it's not just at the lower level, it's also in that mid-level, around the $300,000 level. And we're hoping to address that as well. I'd have many people come to this town looking for that home in that particular level. And like I said, you can scour through the MLS and not find homes that are for sale in that level. So that's kind of what we're looking at. But it is workforce housing, because it is a for-sale project. So it's, you know, you can't really get into the lower level. I think that's more for apartment. I think they can suffice that much better than we can on a for-sale level. But there's still people, you know, people for workforce housing can be, you know, construction workers, they can be bakers, they can be, you know, bank tellers. They're just average people that are not able to afford houses in our economy right now. So that's kind of where the workforce, yeah, the 5% workforce housing comes in. I noticed on this, we had deacted the 20-year part. I had, we're also working with Habitat, we've been in talks with Habitat. So they're also interested, if they can fit into our project, to actually build some of their units out there. And they don't do the 20-year deed restrictions, and so we're not going to be doing that. It's just going to be, you know, they buy it, they own it, and hopefully they can at some point in time build their economic wealth up so they can buy a better home. And then pass on the smaller home that stays, you know, a little bit more affordable in our area.
So I do, I just looked up the numbers for, these are the 2017 income limits for AMI, 100% of AMI for our area, range from essentially 43,000 for a one-person household up to, I'll just say, 61,000 for a four-person household.
Right. That sounds like what Paul and I discussed. And then you have to factor in all the mortgage and interest rates rising and what have you. So economics are going to play a real important role in how this all plays out.
Do you want to tell us anything else about the project, or you feel like this is your opportunity, if you do?
You know, I think Vidila did a really good job on it. All, I think, one thing that wasn't mentioned is that our intention is to have, except for the condo units, is to have garages for everybody, so there won't be massive cars all over the street. So every unit will have at least a one- or two-car garage. And I'm trying to remember if there was anything else you asked him, that I might be able to answer better. But I have my team with me. We have, my attorney Jason Pelz is here, our traffic engineer Christie Stout is here, the land planner John Kennard is here, and also civil engineer Mark Brooks is here. So I have a good team behind me that have got us to this point. So any questions about any of that, we can rely on them to answer a lot of things.
I do have a question about the traffic impacts. We've gotten a couple of emails about that. I mean, this is, I mean, it's a great location for many, from many perspectives, it's a horrible location in that there's one way in, one way out. And I've just been on Google Maps, and there literally is nowhere else to go except out to Brevard Road. So can you talk a little bit about the trips that this is going to add and what you think, you know, I don't particularly like this measure, but it's the measure that we use, level of service. What's the addition of this development going to do to the level of service on Brevard Road?
Can I get the names before we get into that, please? Sure. My name is Christie Stout, and I work with Traffic Planning and Design.
General planning.
Sure. Yeah, so we did complete and submit a traffic impact analysis to the city, and subsequently we have submitted to NC DOT, and they have reviewed it. And they will be making a final determination on any improvement needs shortly. But in the study, we looked at the amount of vehicles that will be generated by this development. And for those, I'm not going to get all into methodology. If you have questions about it, I can certainly do that, or answer any questions you have. But the AM trips are about 225. Directionally, that means about 170 are exiting in the morning, which is about three per minute. PM, 295 trips. So entering in the PM, which would be your directional trip in, would be about three per minute as well. So if someone's sitting there, it's about every 20 seconds. Levels of service at the, for those of you, I'll just, for the general public as well, when we do a traffic impact analysis, we look at how long a person has to sit at an intersection. And that level of service from 0 to 10 seconds is an A, 10 to 15 is a B, 15 to 25 is a C, and it's very much like grading in school. All the driveways and the intersections are C or better, under existing and projected, except for the exiting movements, the left and right turn, I believe the right turn in the evening, because it's a little harder to get out on a Brevard Road. So if you're leaving...
So this is right turn from Ferry Road to Brevard?
From North Ferry on Brevard Road.
So people coming out of the subdivision.
And it's actually out of the city at that point, it's in Buncombe County. But it is a D, but it means about 30 seconds of delay, and the cars are not queuing. We're seeing about one vehicle in the queue. So it's, the benefit of this location, like you said, is that there's a lot of capacity in that section of Brevard Road. And the intersections, because it is a low-volume street, there's not a lot of heavy impact there. Now, to the residents there, it's a very rural street, so I'm sure that's where the concerns came up.
And what is the, this may be a question for you, thank you, that was very helpful. Doesn't sound like, I mean, it's an impact, but it doesn't sound unbearable. What is the timing on the build-out of this? And I ask that question because people may know that 191 is scheduled for widening. That project, we, I may be sharing news with everyone, but most of the road projects in our region just got delayed, literally today. We got, the NPO got the email, and so this project has been delayed by a year. It won't start now until 2024. So how does that jive with your timeframe for build-out?
We were looking at probably anywhere from two to five years, hopefully that as fast as we can. But, you know, two years.
Starting this year?
Yes.
So, okay.
One of the other points there, we did kind of look at that, and we thought, you know, it's really helpful that they're widening to the south, and people do use that.
And to the north.
Right, and to the north. And the issue there, we looked at existing traffic patterns, and the majority of people that are commuting from this residential development now, and the ones that are there are going to and from the north where they're, you know, under construction. So some of the challenges to the south are less of an impact, but just something to note.
Yeah, most of the traffic's moving towards Asheville and rather than away from. So we felt, that's why we actually used the entrance and exit going towards north anyway. Plus, there's a bridge down at the other end that's a little bit prohibitive.
Great. Any other questions of the applicant?
I just have one more question. Going to jump back to number nine. Just out of curiosity, I think I heard you say you're not going to do the 20 years?
No, that was supposed to be deacted. Yeah, I'm sorry, this was an earlier copy that I picked up by accident. This was not supposed to be here. Yeah, it's not supposed to be here.
So the revision was the drop-off of the...
Right. Yes.
So does this mean it'll be 5% forever?
No, it's, there's no deed restriction restricting the person. Say, if somebody buys it...
So the initial sale is...
Yeah, the initial sale would be...
The initial sale is 5%.
Yes.
Got it.
But no deed restrictions beyond that. It's really difficult to do that in a for-sale product and get somebody to want to buy it. And find another buyer. You know, it's just a real domino effect. But since they're smaller units, I think that the market will kind of dictate that price, you know, keeping it a little lower anyway, because they are smaller.
Any other questions? Okay. We are going to open the public hearing in just a minute. I just want to say a few words, and you don't have to stand there.
Okay, thank you.
Just on the history of this site, I don't remember who did the article in the paper today, but it was pretty good. This property was once owned by the city of Asheville, and it was sold to Henderson County. Someone in the room here has got more history than I do, but I know it was a long time ago. And with the idea that the property was, Henderson County was thinking about using it for a sewage treatment site, because it's on the river, I think that's why. And they had 10 years to decide whether or not to use the property for a sewage treatment facility, or the property would revert back to Asheville. There was actually some litigation, I believe, over the reversion clause for property lawyers. It's very exciting stuff to read. But for the rest of us, it was a big pain because it didn't automatically revert. The city extended that 10-year period a couple of times. That was happening right when I first came onto council, which was back in '09. And then what happened was Henderson County and Asheville got into some discussions about this. Asheville wanted the property deeded back. Henderson County wanted some compensation for that. And we got bogged down in that, because part of the original deal was that Asheville got permission from Henderson County to acquire some property in Henderson County for our Mills River intake site, which is in Henderson County. So there was a swap that was happening there. In the end, what happened was we, through some good discussion, we convinced Buncombe County to buy it. And Buncombe County bought the property with the idea that it would be used for economic development. A lot of you remember this, what we were looking at, Deschutes Brewery at the time. And what they did is they bought the property, I don't recall the exact price, it was somewhere around 7.2 million. Henderson County got half of the funds, they were quite pleased with that deal, and we made peace with them over a very longstanding issue. So that was a really good outcome. The other half of the funds came to Asheville and went right back to Buncombe County as our contribution for a new gun range. I believe it was a safety facility, a safety training facility, because also what was happening at the same time is we were all losing our training facility that was out by the airport, because the airport project was happening, where they were widening their runway. So that actually all happened, but what didn't happen, as you know, is the Deschutes project didn't happen. So Buncombe County got left holding this property, and now has found someone who will purchase the property and develop it. So this kind of brings this whole situation to a close, in my mind. And luckily, we're looking at housing, which is something that we very much need in the city. So I just wanted to add that little piece of history. I'm sure I'm missing some detail on it, somebody else knows more about it, but just to give that context. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. If there's anyone who'd like to comment on this, please state your name. I do have a couple people that signed up for public comment at the end of the meeting, but mentioned this project, and Michael Bowman is the first. So this would be our opportunity to speak on the project. Please state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Bowman, and I'm very impacted by this. I have to make this bigger and better. That triangle corner up there at the top is my property on the left. See what cuts in, goes there? I have about two acres of property up there. By what I understand, yes, sir, that's mine right there. If we can see that.
That right there is yours.
This is my property here. I read in the thing that the minimum lot size is 26 feet wide, and I saw the setbacks running back at 10 feet. What is the setbacks on the side? I didn't recognize that, and where's it in, what was there? Those right there, all of these lots here, right in my backyard, my house is right here in this corner. I mean, I know it's not my property, I haven't got a whole lot to say and do, but I would appreciate just a little bit more of a buffer than 20 feet of understated property. If I'm going to have houses that are 26-foot wide lots, they're going to be, there's 15 or so right there, then they get a little wider around. This piece here is not going to be used, looks like. But that's a lot of density. The best part of this property is my backyard, the flattest, best thing there that they have. I'm glad they're not going to work on the sidewalk or anything up and down Ferry Road, because that would not be feasible, no way to do that to tie it in. I offered to buy the property from the county years ago. I asked them if they'd take a check, I'd buy it, but I just couldn't back it up. I got laughed at him like y'all got.
Surprising.
Mr. Gant, Mr. Frye, the commissioners, I've known them for years and years, and they knew me, I was at the meeting when Deschutes Brewery was there. And me personally, I'd hold up rather had a brewery back there. I wouldn't be drinking their beer, but I'd rather have the brewery. There's 418 units in my backyard. But again, it's not my backyard. If you recognize that property when you drive up and down Ferry Road, the grass is mine and the trees are not. I don't have a whole lot behind me, you know? I've enjoyed that for years, we've been there about eight years now. And got lots of backyard animals, turkeys, deer, coyotes, you know? I keep, I got the turkeys at my house hooked on crack, that corn. I keep fed all the time. Running over squirrels, bears all over the place. Understand growth and housing and all that going, but I hate to see it be quite so dense right there in the backyard. Like I say, they wouldn't take my check that I couldn't back up, so I can't, I haven't got a whole lot I can do with it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to have a little consideration for maybe a little bit more buffer between there. If you have a 10-foot setback, time's up.
Time's up, thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
I don't have anyone else who's signed up to speak on this, but is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
My name is Seth Solzby. I live on adjacent parcel down the road off of Alpha Drive, take a left on Mob Hill Road. The community is fine with that. Personally, I'm fine with the houses. I'm not fine with commercial. We don't need commercial traffic and commercial business in a offside residential area. If this property was right on Brevard Road, I'd say put commercial down Brevard Road, build the houses behind it, but it's not. And leaving out of that community, you already have to wait a pretty good while, Monday, Wednesday, and Tuesday. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, you're probably going to be waiting four or five minutes sometimes to turn, to get in and out, because traffic, well, you mentioned they're going to... well, you mentioned they're gonna widen it. Uh, but it's, it's bad. If you don't believe me, just come out, you know, Thursday, Friday, between 3:00 and 5:00, and, uh, well, just call me when you're at the bottom of the road, and you'll, you'll get there in probably 15, 20 minutes. Uh, as far as, uh, the commercial aspect, uh, if you could just make that a buffer, or even, and like Mr. Bowman said, the houses are one thing. Uh, when you stack all these condos, and I understand the city council's all about urban development and getting as many units as they can, uh, but it'd be a lot nicer community with just homes, uh, in my opinion, and there'd be a lot less traffic and a lot less impact, uh, as far as the neighbors around, which if you look at the property around that, it's mostly R1, and then you're throwing a, I think it's R16, or 18, in right beside it, down the same road that you expect everybody else to use. Uh, it's, it's just a little unnecessary, in my opinion. But, I mean, like I said, the houses are fine, just we'd, we'd appreciate if you'd eliminate the commercial aspect altogether, and like Mr. Bowman said, reduce the number of condos, townhomes, and apartment buildings. We've got enough apartment buildings on Bevard Road. You've got them behind, uh, Tozerus. You've got them down Sardis Road. Uh, there were one all up in South Asheville. There's enough homes for apartments. Uh, if we could minimize that, it would be appreciated. And address a little bit wider road. Uh, all they've told us is they're gonna soften the S-curve going down the hill, and it's, you can't really see the S-curve on that map. It's right below their first entrance. Uh, softening is still gonna be an impact, even when you put two-way traffic, because now two-way traffic going up the road still has to kind of slow down and make sure you're over far enough, because it's not wide enough. Uh, and when you try and bottleneck, uh, two large trucks in an S-curve that's not even 100 yards long, uh, there's gonna be problems. Not to mention it's downhill. You add snow, something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, I guess...
Hey there. My name is Casey Campfield. Um, I am all in favor of high-density housing in Asheville. God knows, we need some more of it. Uh, but what this looks like right now is another large development that's gonna be completely out of reach for Asheville's low and middle-low income families. Uh, this might be great for people moving to the area with $300,000 or $400,000 to spend on a house, uh, but that's not the people I'm trying to represent right now. Uh, 5% affordable units, when the definition of affordable seems to be heavily qualified here, leaves 95% of these units not available to people who make between $41,000 and $60,000, or whatever you said earlier. Um, I think that you can negotiate a better deal for that than that for the citizens of Asheville. Like, we need more affordable housing, and this is not really stepping to what we need right now. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes.
So, I haven't prepared anything. I just want to reiterate the fact that, obviously, with the history of this land, it sounds important to go ahead and go through with it. But we really, really, really need to look at trying to get AMI slower. You know, um, it's not very helpful to have affordable defined as 80% average median income, at 10% occupancy for, what, 10 years? Uh, we really need to look at trying to at least get down to 60. I mean, then we would feel like you're actually trying to do something. Thank you. And, um, one more thing. If we could get some kind of local work with construction, that would make everything even more sustainable.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Hi. My name is Leah Carter, and I won't be redundant and repeat, um, comments made from the first two speakers. My land is adjacent to the first speaker, Mr. Bowman. Um, it's over here on the other side of the road. I would just want to reiterate, um, I understand that there are a lot of different income ranges here in Buncombe County and in the city. I understand people need affordable housing. However, when, um, I and my husband purchased the land and built our house, um, we chose that area because there is no high-density housing in the, in the area, to be honest. So it's, it's definitely gonna, you know, impact our environment, the traffic, you know, our surroundings. So I would just appreciate that consideration from the committee. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Um, do I have questions, comments, or a motion?
Comments. Were you...
I had a question, actually, for, for Vidilla. What, so what is the rear setback on those lots that are adjacent to the gentleman's property?
And, and buffering.
And, and is there a buffer requirement? That's the second piece of it.
There, so the, the negotiated, uh, setback is minimum 10 feet, but, um, throughout the, throughout the development, the, let me see how it's phrased here, um, there'll be a minimum of a 20-foot undisturbed area along the perimeter.
20 foot, so there'll be, and, and that says undisturbed, so if there are trees there now, there will be trees there after the construction.
That's right.
So there'll be 20, 20-foot of trees between his property and...
And it'd probably be better, I don't know if you, if you guys want to say more specifically on, on how you're approaching this.
That's fine. I just wanted to get some clear, I mean, if you want to, that's fine.
Good evening. I'm John Canard with Brooks Engineering, the land planner. I don't have a whole lot to add, but he's correct. There will be a minimum 20-foot buffer along every property line, uh, and in most places, it's 50, 100 feet or even more. Uh, even up in the commercial areas at the front, you can see there will be an undisturbed buffer along the road.
And is that gonna be deed restricted, so that the homeowner, once it's sold, can't come in and cut all those down?
Isn't it part of the conditional zoning?
Yes.
Or, I mean, whatever it is, the homeowners are gonna understand that they're not, they can't just come down and cut all those trees down.
Yes, it'll be on the plan, and the deeds, we'll reference that too.
Okay. All right. Um, yeah, I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions before?
I'll take a hundred.
Will you write a check for that?
I have one more question.
Well, you have another question for...
Yeah, one more question for the applicant. In terms of the commercial uses, it sounds like you're, it sounds like you're not trying to build something that's gonna draw people in from Bevard Road. It's really for the people who are gonna live in that community. Is that right?
And, and of course, anybody else who lives around that community. Yeah, the intention was to have kind of the neighborhood supporting, and the original thought was one of them to be a daycare facility for people who live in the neighborhood.
You know, because I think we have a shortage of that as well, because we, especially if
we're gonna get people who, um, are in that affordable area, they need, they don't want to have to drive way across town to drop their kids off. Um, otherwise, it's just the lib workspace. We'll have a couple apartments above that can be rented, but it's gonna be a very small, low-key, low footprint, no 24/7-type deal. It's just gonna be a neighborhood feel.
And, and since you're there, I have yet another question.
Okay.
Can you remind us of the number of condos and the number of duplexes?
The condos is 36, and the duplexes, I think it's 188, right?
188.
Yeah.
And the number, the 5% of your units will be about 20 some odd units. Is that right?
It would be higher than that, I believe.
We've got 400 and...
Yeah.
416, so...
Right now, basically, where the condos are, all the condos of 36 are going to be geared, because they're all the same size. So they're all gonna be geared towards affordable. The, the problem with a for-sale product is we can't, we don't have a crystal ball to dictate, you know, to peek in to see what the economy's going to be doing. So, you know, we're, we're keeping on the lot, the leaner side. We can see the possibility of getting closer to 8% to 10%, but we don't want to necessarily commit to that till we know what the economy's gonna be doing, if that makes any sense.
It does. I think I'm anticipating where, where Keith is going. I, I, I would love to see a more affordable, we haven't, I don't know, since I've been on council, that we've done a conditional zoning with affordable for-sale properties.
Right.
We, we normally do it in the context of rental.
Correct.
Well, we did our own.
What, what's that?
We did our own.
Yeah, well, we do our own. That's, that's a little bit different. Um, yeah, I guess I, I would love, I mean, to some of the comments that have been made, you know, typically what we, when rezonings come to us, what we look at is, you know, 20% affordable, and now, to the point of one of the public commenters, you know, we're asking for more like 40-years, 50-year commitments. I realize on a for-sale project, you're, you're not really set up to do that.
Right.
Um, but, uh, I would, I, I certainly would love to see a, a higher percent on the initial, um, you know, more, closer to 10%. And it seems like with 36 condos and 188 duplexes, that, that, that could be easily possible.
I think that, yeah, that's why I say that, you know, 8% to 10%, that's possibly doable. Um, but we're, like I said, we're trying to keep on the conservative side, because we do know that there has not been any real for-sale products here. It's been rental, for the most part. And if you're, if you look at the rental market versus the sale, the for-sale market, the rent, the rental, the developer's gonna own that property, so they have control over the property.
Right, that's right.
But we don't have control over who buys it, and we're gonna divert to the city for help in vetting people, because we don't want people coming in, you know, retirees coming into our town and just gobbling these products up. We want to see them go to people who are here, rather than coming in with income from somewhere else.
Well, so, so maybe, maybe we can think about, and, and I need to let Keith give his comment, but maybe we can think about some way of tying a 10% commitment to an AMI level, so that, I don't know.
I see where you're going.
I mean, if you're concerned about the economy, then let's pick a number in there that says, if, if AMI doesn't exceed this, then I, I don't know how to do it. There's smarter people here than me to do that, but that's...
Paul would have been here, but he had a prior obligation in Wilmington, so he had to leave. And he could have probably addressed that real well, but I just, I don't know. I defer to him on that kind of stuff.
Keith, is this the same part of it?
So, the comment that I was gonna make was, this is, this is hard for me, because I'm, I'm, I'm actually experiencing some real anxiety right now. Like, physical anxiety, not, not for approval or disapproval of the project, just in a sense of, you know, if I support this project, I want to support this project and let people know that there's nothing about this project, in my opinion, that is affordable, at all. I think some folks got up and said some things about it. But there is also, um, an understanding from my standpoint to know that there are other income levels that require housing. Maybe not to the, the price point that I would like to see, but there are other income levels, and there's an understanding on that. There's another, you know, background to the property of, you know, having it in limbo for a while and, and having a developer come forward. It is, it is difficult for me to wanna support this, knowing that it's not affordable. I get that, you know, this came up earlier today, or whenever we got it, that said you're gonna do the 5% or whatever. In my mind, it doesn't even register. It, it doesn't even, some people might say anything's good, but in my mind, it doesn't even take a blip off the radar. And that's no, no offense to the project, the wonderful project that you've put forth to, to do what you need to do. I'm just basically saying to folks who are out there listening, who respect me, who, uh, look toward me to, to, to make sure that some of these affordable projects come forward, I'm actually gonna support the project, but it's, it is begrudgingly on my part. And it is very difficult for me to do that, in a sense of knowing that there's nothing about this that is affordable, but also with the understanding of the background of the project, the, the background of the land, but also understanding that there is so many different levels, um, that need housing. So for those folks who look toward me to champion affordable housing and, and other, other things on the city level, know that this is, this is very hard for me and very difficult to support this project, but I think I am gonna support this project based on some, some other fundamentals that, that I've kind of wrestled with, with myself. And I'll just say that. As far as what Julie said, if you can get it up to 10%, that would, that, I mean, I would love to hear that here tonight, but, uh, you know, you'd have to tell, tell us here tonight, I would suppose.
Yeah, or, I mean, my question...
Can we do a firm 8%? And then, we're gonna try to get as much as we can in there. That's the whole point. That I'm just trying to work out. It's hard to work out all the numbers in my head, just standing here.
Right, right. So that's, so then I'm gonna ask, is it, is it, could we have another, could we have some more time for you and Paul to figure that out? Like, what would be the triggering, if you're worried about the economy, when these, when, when it's built out and things are, are ready to be sold, what, what would be the triggering factor that would say it's either 5% or 10%? Um, if, if that's an area median income, income number, if that's a, you know, something else. Again, I don't know what it would be, but, so my question is, um, I, I know you, I know you would love for us to vote on this tonight, but is there, I mean, is two weeks crucial, or can we take two more weeks to try to figure this out and have you come back in two weeks?
She just committed to 8%.
Did, did you hang on one second?
She just committed to 8%.
About the area median, um, that we were gonna ask the, the conditions?
Well, I, I had distracted a little bit. There wasn't anything of how you're gonna, how you're gonna enforce that. So just working with the five, the 5% number was to have the city be able to, before that unit could be sold, they'd have to come to the city and show that the initial sales price was in that, I guess, a 4, a 100% AMI range. But, um, if you wanted to do, if you're not sure the number, we don't usually like to do ranges in a condition...
Well, she's offered 8%.
But she just offered 8%.
But if you wanted to do 8% tonight in that set, and then if you really can't make it work, I guess you could come back for a modification. But we, you have to be pretty specific to that condition.
I feel pretty confident that 8% probably can be reached. I'm just not sure about beyond that.
Okay, well, 8% is better than 5?
Pardon me?
8% is better than 5?
Okay.
Um, okay, so our, I have already closed the public hearing. So we're, so do we have any other questions of the developers before we entertain a motion now with this modification to 8%? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Okay, you, you look ready. Are you making a motion?
I'm not ready.
Do you have more questions?
No, no, no. I mean, when I, when I say, I mean, when I say I, I literally have physical anxiety about supporting this project, that is, that is, that is, that is real and true that, like, I, I, a part of me really feels like I'm, I'm letting folks down by approving this project. And, uh, but, but I also understand some other elements of it. And so, anyway.
So I move to recommend approval of the conditional zoning request as amended to the 8% for the Ferry Road subdivision from residential multifamily high-density district RM16 to commercial expansion district.
Wait, they have a, I'm sorry, they have a...
Yes.
You're good there.
Oh, change, okay. Do you want me to start over, or? I think I was at, um, "commercial expansion district, com, exp." And residential expansion district, and declared that this approval is also deemed an amendment to the future land use map within the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan, and find that the request resulting future land use map amendments from traditional neighborhood and neighborhood center to residential neighborhood, neighborhood center, and parks slash open spaces reasonable, is in the public interest, meets the development needs of the community, and is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan in that this project provides a mix of housing units that will help to meet the demand for housing in Asheville, two, is compatible with current and desired future, future land uses, three, helps to preserve environmentally sensitive land adjacent to the French Broad River, and four, aligns with the community character for this area as specified in the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? We're gonna vote. Ready? All those in favor, please raise your hand. And, okay. Any opposed, please raise your hand. All right. Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes the public hearing's agenda. Um, that, that if you're on the public hearing's agenda and you want to make a mass exodus, this is your opportunity.
Quietly.
Quietly. Okay. Okay, folks, take your conversations out into the hall, please, or to Pax Tavern, or wherever you prefer.
Just not in the chambers.
Okay, folks, move out into the hall. If you could just move into the hall to have your conversations. Um, all right, we have one item of new business, and that's... All right, we have one item of new business and that is a resolution, two items of new business, that is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a property tax billing and collection fee agreement between the city of Asheville and Buncombe County. And Barbara Whitehorn is here to explain this super exciting thing.
It is super exciting. I'm Barbara Whitehorn, Chief Financial Officer for y'all, the city. We enter, we started talks with the county in 2017 in hopes of getting a different format for our property tax billing and collections. The county assesses property tax and then we contract with them to bill and collect those property taxes for us, and then they remit the funds to us. Going into the details, the previous contract was based on 1.5% of our total levy, or the amount that we received each year in property taxes. With property tax values increasing in the city faster than the county, the cost of the billing for the taxpayers, if you figured out how much we paid versus how many people lived in the city, was disproportionate to how much people in the county or in other cities in Buncombe County were paying. So in fiscal year 17, we were paying $895,000 for our tax billing and collections. So we developed an interim contract for 1718 at $795,000. The county agreed that there was a disparate cost for the city, which is great. So kudos to Buncombe County for coming to the table and negotiating this with us. Our new contract is flat fee based. It is a three-year term, and it's actually based on that $795,000 with a 2.5% annual increase just for cost of doing business. So we have 18, 19, and 20, I mean, rather 19, 20, and 21 up there. And if we assume that our old contract amount would have increased at 2.5%, which that amount varied obviously by how much additional property tax we received each year, but that is generally between 1% during a recession or double digits when we see a revaluation, that old contract was fairly hard to predict. But using 2.5%, we would, we have a savings of more than $100,000 each year, and it increases every year because now it's based on a predictable flat fee rather than on that rather volatile levy. So, that's it.
So, so the long story short is that this will save us some money.
Yes.
And, and I would just like to give full kudos to Coin Westler here, who is one of the crazy people who's like, hey, wait a second, we should take a look at this agreement, which nobody else notices or talked about ever, and personally spearheaded this effort. So I think it's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn, for saving us some bucks, and to the staff for hashing out the details.
And you kept on it, so I appreciate that.
Right. So that, that's pretty cool. And for Buncombe County to agree and to agree.
Yeah, it's a pretty big deal.
That was helpful.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we need, on this one, I need a motion, and then I will ask for any comments.
I would move to, I'm sorry, I don't have it open. Hold on. I would move to authorize the city manager to execute a property tax billing and collection fee agreement between the city of Asheville and Buncombe County.
Second. Shannika gets a second on that. We have a motion and a second. Okay, is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have boards and commissions, and I will hand it over to the vice mayor.
Great, thank you very much. We have, we had a lot of great applicants and we have a lot of openings, so I'm going to move through this, but again, thanks, thanks for all the people who volunteer to come out and help the city make better decisions. So for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, the Boards and Commissions Committee recommends the appointment of Andy Barnett. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For the Board of Adjustment Alternate Member, the Boards and Commissions Committee recommends Rob Carroll. Second, I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. For the Board of Electrical Engineers, we would propose that we re-advertise. And for the CPAC Citizens Police Advisory Committee, we would recommend that we re-advertise for, for both the open positions, which is the Housing Authority and the South Seat. For the Downtown Commissions, the Boards and Commissions would recommend that we reappoint Brent Campbell, Franzi Sharon, Dave Behringer, I wrote this in my handwriting, and Pamela Winkler. Second, I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. For the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee, the Boards and Commissions recommends David Nash to represent HACA on the committee. I have a second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. For, this is a new committee, for the Mountain Community Capital Fund Operating Committee, the Boards and Commissions Committee recommends the appointment of Dee Williams and Lynn Smith. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. For the Metropolitan Sewage Districts, the Boards and Commissions recommends the reappointment of Chris Pelley. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. For the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, the Boards and Committee, Boards and Commissions Committee recommends the reappointment of Jane Matthews. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And for the Sustainability, for SACE, we would recommend the reappointment of Anna Priest and Keith McDade, and we would recommend to re-advertise for the third open seat. I have a second. I, I actually want to suggest, well, I'll hold it until the next time around. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And for the Tree Commission, the Boards and Commissions recommends the reappointment of Stephen Hendricks and Amy Smith. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay.
That is the conclusion of our agenda, and I do, I do have some folks signed up to speak. I would like to congratulate Deborah on making it to her second meeting. She did not leave us after the first one.
And you did not fire me?
Wait, she doesn't have that option, does she?
Baby steps.
No, no.
But we are so glad you're here and you're working so hard to meet everybody in this community. So, and also, if you'll notice, we already have a little bit of a new look on our agenda and our staff reports, thanks to Deborah, retooling a little there. So I was so pleased when I opened the first staff report, I was like, look at this. You can read it in not too much time. So that was helpful. Okay, so the first person I have signed up to speak is, oh, sorry, I got out of order. Tom Halliday. And I have no idea what that beeping noise is.
Can you stop?
Can you make it stop?
Can you make it stop?
Oh, oh, so it's inside. Okay. All right.
The voices and people I represent on council will likely be voiceless due to these actions. Councilperson Young said this of the right wing attack on our city being launched by Raleigh in the form of Senate Bill 813. 75% of Asheville voters supported the referendum rejecting Senate Bill 813, the districting and gerrymandering of Asheville City Council elections. 100% of city council members have publicly opposed Senate Bill 813, the districting and gerrymandering of city council, city council elections. But talk is cheap and city attorneys are not. Why has interim city attorney Sabrina Rockoff not yet filed an injunction against Senate Bill 813? Greensboro fought and won. Wake County fought and won. Why are we not fighting? 75% of Asheville asked you all to do something you already agree with. Let's go.
Okay, the next person I have signed up to speak is Casey Campfield.
Thank you for letting me speak again. This is going to sound pretty similar to that last speech, but I think it's important and needs to be said as many times as possible. I'm here today to ask you to address the elephant in the room, namely the bill passed by Raleigh to gerrymander Asheville's elections. Given our legislature's record of racist and illegal gerrymandering at the state level, we all have a pretty good idea of what Asheville's voting districts will look like if this law is not challenged. Most of you sitting on the bench now have expressed opposition to these districts, and Asheville's voters turned out with a resounding three quarters in opposition. That's, you know, across all party lines there. Nobody here wants it. My question to you then is this, will you live up to the ideals you have espoused? Will you represent the will of your constituents? Greensboro, Greensboro and Wake County both successfully fought attempts by Raleigh to gerrymander their elections. Why is Asheville not fighting back? Thank you.
The next person I have signed up to speak is Jonathan Wayne Scott.
My name is Jonathan Wayne Scott. I just stopped in the Board of Elections on Friday to find out what the dealio was with the map of the districts, and they kind of said that the city was sort of playing not my job with providing them a map. And as it turns out, since the map, which is right here, is part of the legislation, there is no question this is going to maintain the map. You guys don't have to provide them any information. You don't have to provide them any permission. And as soon as they get the, as soon as they get the files from whoever made the map that goes with this, they'll be able to import the information. It should be done in a couple weeks, and then we'll know exactly what the demographic makeup is at that time, and you should know specifically what that information is. And so that should be forthcoming. It hasn't really been published. Other than this, in the Mountain Express, you see, you know, Terry Van Dyne being used as a tool to break up the, the black districts, or the black precincts, the black, six precincts.
Jonathan, pull it down a little.
The six precincts.
The other way.
Stretch all the way from Broadway and on Riverside Drive, which is Woodfin, and then all the way down to where the Blue Ridge Parkway crosses Hendersonville Road. And so if we drew our own maps, it would be thoroughly impossible to draw any district that doesn't separate this continuance of the African-American community. And my estimation of the number of black voters from this little section of 8.3 was only 14. There were only 14 black voters here that have been put into District 4. District 2 is approximately 100% more concentrated African-American vote. That's just, you know, me taking the precincts that are there in those districts and adding it up. But we will have specific information forthcoming, and you should know exactly what that is because this narrative of gerrymandering is completely false. It's just not there at all. That's your silver bullet with trying to get this legislation shot down and suing. You should wait and find out how much power is actually in those numbers specifically because it, you cannot break five pieces into parts that are going to be less, you know, concentrated than the whole to begin with. It's just not mathematically possible. It's an inconvenient truth that I'm telling you here. I'm sorry about that, but every reason that has been given to not District Asheville has been turned out to be completely false. It's not about our size. It's not about, you know, having a homogeneous city. It's not about gerrymandering. It's not about any kind of racial intent. Thank you.
The next person I have signed up to speak is Susan Loftus.
Good evening, Mayor Manheimer and city council members. I thank you for the opportunity to talk. I have a resolution draft that is in response to some efforts that some community members have been working to come up with some alternatives for the I-26 project. So I'd like to read it. Whereas the city of Asheville has worked hand in hand with NC DOT, and whereas the NC DOT has developed in good faith the current plan based on the wishes of the city, whereas the city and its citizens have only recently been in a position to realize fully the consequences of the large land taking and the 4B flyovers, whereas the citizens of Asheville attended the December 4th meeting and overwhelmingly expressed concern and opposition to the current plans, the city of Asheville acknowledges the need for an I-26 connector project but opposes the current layout and requests that NC DOT project team meet with Julie Mayfield, Deborah Campbell, the new city manager, and a small group of citizens to address our concerns in an effort to improve the project. I hope you will consider this among yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, but if there's anyone else wishing to, pardon? I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, but if you would like to speak, you need to state your name. You have three minutes and on items not on our agenda.
Mayor, how you doing? Keith? I did fill out one paperwork, because the one they said is on the paper. I was actually, I was on the police, the citizens advisory, and I actually just wanted, first of all, to throw my name in the ring if you are interviewing people. Obviously, I took my time and effort to run for sheriff for a reason. The song I wrote, "We" also was long before quitting speech, or about two years before that, so. One thing I also ask, no matter who y'all put in the position, and obviously, you know, handle this from a business perspective and all, you're looking at, you know, categorize the major issues. We got to deal with homelessness, the drugs, stuff like that, and actually try to find the, and it's like, we had like the homeless issue, I'm not sure if it's the same Marx last name, but if you're having somebody deal with homelessness, then you should have somebody who's dealt with it the most, if you want to be most effective. And then you got like the Mark and Brian that we got down at Haywood. You know, we deal with 500 on Wednesday, 300 to 400 homeless on Sundays, whenever we're feeding them, they're doing the shots and all that stuff. So as you're looking into those people, they're readily available. And the same thing, why I throw my name in the ring for the police citizen advisory, because like the Asheville evidentiary audit, I'm not sure if y'all know the factor that I played in that, but I was actually the voice that got that saw through. I was the one that went to my gunny sergeant, Rayner Joelshuguen, the operations manager with the Charlotte FBI. Afterwards, everybody just wanted to sweep it under the rug. Being a Marine, the one thing that sets us apart from the rest of the other branches out there is accountability and clarity. And you'll notice we're quick to hold our own, say, hey, this is how we do this, you know? That's why we're the spearhead on most projects. With the advisory, when y'all are doing it, I just ask, you know, you find somebody from each community as far as, you know, you got, the most people that I see dealing with the homeless out there is your EMT, EMS, fire and rescue, and not directly from AFD over here, but you also got Swan and O' Fire Department, Reno Fire Department, stuff like that. What I would do is ask, as they combined through the fire community, ask them to put somebody forward, to be honest, as the advisory on something like that. And the same with the homeless, you know, you got Amy's home, you've got the Haywood community, you've got a whole bunch of groups, the BAQ deals with a lot of it also, ask them to put for somebody forward. To where that way, actually, we're getting them as a grade combined. This is the best we have to offer on these issues that we need to address for our advisories. So, thank y'all, God bless, and I hope to talk to you soon.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, my name's Ben Williamson. I'm a local educator here in Asheville. I've been a resident since 2001. And I like to comment on future housing developments that may come before the council. I'm not an expert and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but to me, as a longtime resident of the city, there's not a housing shortage for people making far above AMI. The shortage is for those at or especially below. Future developments that offer something like 8% at 100%. Future developments that offer something like 8% at 100% AMI, as Councilman Young referenced earlier, does not address affordable housing in our area. I would respectfully challenge council to be firm with future developers, to challenge them to make a little less money and do much more to move the needle in our area in truly affordable, to address truly affordable housing. How else are we going to change the trends in our area? How else are we going to stand up for those that can't be here tonight because they're working multiple jobs or at home with their kids? I'm surprised and disappointed that this council unanimously approved a development with these characteristics and this level of disregard for this critical need in our city. Future developments like that could have easily increased inventory for both high and low-income residents, while also filling the council's desire to develop that plot. I look forward to the time when council members do not rest until affordable housing moves to the top of all considerations regarding future developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
And while Reed's coming up, I just want to say a couple things. So on that point, you know, we, we know how to deal with rezonings for apartment complexes and rental projects. We've, we've got our affordable housing stuff dialed into that. This is, this is, this is a for-sale project, and we...
Frankly, they don't usually come before us.
Right, I mean, this, this project didn't come before any of the committees, HCD that deals with this, that usually deals with this issue, so, like, I didn't even know this was an issue until, until Keith showed me the, so this is new, and what we did tonight, requiring a percent of affordable in a development that is housing for sale, is totally brand-new. So we just have to talk, we need to figure it out. I think if we'd had a little more time, we could have, you know, we might have come to a different place, but now that we know that maybe this is going to be happening, we can talk to the staff and, and try to see if we can develop some standards around that, just like we have around rental property. So I, I, I think none of us rest well, knowing the affordable affordability issues that we have, and, you know, we do have, if, I've actually asked the, we've asked the staff to sort of chart out the affordable units that are, that could potentially come online with the development of the high-impact sites, and Oak Hill and Cedar Hill and all of these, and I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, potentially, of affordable units that could come online in the next, I don't know, five to 10 years, maybe, you know, probably well over 1,000. So it's, it's a, there's a lot of movement happening right now, it's, there's not, and there's actually a lot of construction happening as well, but there is a lot of movement that will get us, that will get us down that road. Again, for sale, purchase, purchase and sale for affordability is, is a new issue for us, and we're, we're just dealing with it right now, really, at the committee level and Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and all of that. So appreciate the, the comments and the encouragement to keep working on it, and we will.
Yeah, I'm sorry, when somebody else put something on the laptop, it, it went to the videos, and it should not have.
Dan, wherever he is, watching us.
They bring these back.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you can just pause or stop. So here are my neighbors blowing leaves over on me, I clean this up all the time. They have signs up on the street saying that they take care of our street, and they don't. I'm going to pause this, I've written a statement this evening, I usually come in here all emotional, and I don't have my fault, John. And excuse me, Ms. Campbell, welcome, thank you, it's nice to meet you, I haven't met you before. I think everybody else here has had the privilege of meeting me once or twice. My name's Reed Thompson, I live on Maxwell Street. Life on Maxwell Street has reached a new point of insanity. You really can't make this up, it just makes me have to laugh. The city lets my neighbors violate numerous UDO violations. My neighbors ignored all of our public processes. Your staff never issued a notice of violation for them, for their, for their zoning violation, nor enforced any moving or zoning violations. Deadlines that the city has set upon them have come and passed, and nothing has happened. Yet on the other side of the street, I get notices of violation for just about anything, including shrubs eight inches over the sidewalk. I entered into a process as asked for approvals to use my properties for something that would tolerate all of this nuisance across the street, and you all deny that with the excuse that I am somehow commercializing the street, yet you neglect the unbuffered commercial activity on the other side of the street and the daily violation of our laws. Since then, my fellow taxpayers need to know that our city has installed a staff member on the street to ensure that the residents of Maxwell Street, my tenants, get tickets, and that green life violators do not. If they are getting tickets, do ask your council members to show them to you. I have, and I haven't gotten any evidence. We are all paying to protect a violator. That should cause some alarm. And then to add insult to all of this, I rent out my house to a couple of friends of mine, and the city denies them the ability to get parking passes citing a law that does not exist. I bring you long-term tenants, and you treat them differently, too. What's the deal? When are we going to stop this abuse? I get it, the city wants to come down with the full force of their anger upon me, that's fine, but that's not the law. That's not why you took office, and that's not the oath you swore to uphold. It's embarrassing, unethical, illegal, and sad. Ms. Campbell, you have the ability to change the culture of our city and do the right thing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I have a question about that. I've asked several times to get a report on the tickets that were written on Maxwell Street, do we have that? Did I miss it?
... I can show videos of staff organizing.
Okay. So can Julie, can we, yeah, I think Deborah can email that, that memo to, it's just a summary of the ticketing. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we have a closed session motion.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons: to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31810A3. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through To consider the qualification competence, performance, character, fitness, and condition of appointment of an individual public officer or employee, the statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A6. And to prevent the disclosure of information that is confidential pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168 through 168, the Personnel Privacy Act, the statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 31811A1.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, any opposed? All right, we will adjourn from the closed session.